S test.
Seemed like we're segregated. What always bothered me? Thoughts ma'am? Any thoughts? You look like you're deep in thought.
Fine check. Sarah. Microphone good?
Oh, let's turn it on and see. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Wonderful.
He says, that's the house next door. So, so that's what kind of put me over. This this particular. They'll make that pictures. Okay, see. The postal workers say they don't ever say he is, you know. Know what I mean? Actually, this sort of. Unless they can't get testify. But this is not the same as the other one. This is not a candidate. This is a voter, so. That's why I'm. And the other one.
Oh, I was like, I hear my name. Yep.
He wasn't convicted of a felony. It was a misdemeanor.
Randy. Just letting you know it's ten.
Yeah. I have. So what matters right there?
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Brunswick County Board of Elections to order. First item on our agenda would be the Hall Pleasure of Allegiance. Everybody please stand.
I. From the United States of America. And to the Republic of all states. Under God.
Have a. Motion to approve the agenda or changes?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. The first item on our agenda this morning is a preliminary hearing. For a voter challenge filed by myself as Chair of the Board. For Trevor Moark. And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that name. Mr. Moark here?
Okay. Would you like me to explain?
Director.
Okay. Um, so the preliminary.
Yeah. Do you affirm what you're about to state is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Um, okay, so this proceeding is a voter challenge, which is spelled out in the statutes and and the reason for that is. If we get information that a registered voter has been convicted of a felony or is serving a felony conviction. The process is we provide that voter thirty days notice to object to that removal. If the voter submits an objection to removal, the statute then says that the board. Which is why Randy filed this challenge should enter a challenge against the voter. I do want to provide information that I received from this voter with his. Objection. So he provided that he is not a felon. And what I was able to find is that on the North Carolina Department of Adult Corrections website. They list that he is currently serving probation with an interstate compact from Pennsylvania. So, um, North Carolina appears to be just facilitating the probation or parole on behalf of Pennsylvania. The Mr. Moark provided a document with the adjudication. Of his case showing that he pled to a misdemeanor. And I did run this by the county attorney, Brian Batten. And he confirms that in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The only conviction is for a misdemeanor. So we believe he is not in fact a felon.
Okay. So. As I understand the process and for the audience. The Department of Corrections in North Carolina sends a list of people they believe to be felons to the State Board of Elections in North Carolina. Who will match that up with the voter rolls?
Yes, it's part of routine voter list maintenance.
Okay.
Yes.
And they in turn send that to us and we have to. Find. Have a hearing to determine whether that individual is removed from the voter rolls. Is that correct?
Yes, if they if they provide an objection to the removal, yes, which is which is how we arrived here today.
And and Mr. Moak had essentially has provided an objection to. The material that was provided by the Department of Corrections.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question.
Certain.
Brian. Um, even though it, uh. Crime was a misdemeanor in Pennsylvania, that might not be, it might be a felony in North Carolina. Does that make a difference?
I don't believe so. It the law, my understanding of the law is. If they're. Convicted of some, well. I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was. Um, just for clarification. I probably should have started with this. Mrs. Laver is our director for the Brunswick County Board. Mr. Batten is our county attorney and the attorney for the board. Of the five board members up here, the four of us on. The right hand side are laypeople. Mrs. Cleary, Clary. I get that correct. Is is an attorney in the state of North Carolina, so she has a little more knowledge than than we do. Just so everybody knows who we are.
I write wills to say.
I'm sorry?
I said I draft wills.
We respect your your position and your education.
Thank you, Randy.
So. So. What we're saying is we have the material that came from the State Board. That indicated that it was a. On the behalf of the state of Pennsylvania, he was being administered here in North Carolina and somehow or another. The material that came from Mr. Moak, and I do hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Indicated that he did serve some kind of a jail term in Pennsylvania relative to a misdemeanor charge in Pennsylvania. That that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, as far as we know, there was no other infraction in the state of North Carolina or anything else.
Yes, all the information in the North Carolina Department of Adult Corrections system indicates that he is only in the system here on behalf of Pennsylvania.
Okay. And this clearly you you asked about. Whether or not the offense in Pennsylvania might be considered a.
Felony in North Carolina, yeah.
Okay, and the answer to that would have been.
Well, he said no.
Okay.
Are we going with that?
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure I had that clear in my head. All right. There any questions? Any discussion on this issue?
I'm gonna move to dismiss the challenge as to Trevor Moore.
Okay. Any discussion? Gentlemen? No, okay. I have no other questions. All in favor of the motion to dismiss the challenge? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Challenge is dismissed. Madam Director, you'll notify Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will create an order. The county attorney will create an order from this proceeding, and once I get your signature on it, we'll share that with him.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the hearing for voter challenge. Of Michael Femley to the voter registration of Lori Smith and Richard F. Smith, Jr. Is Mr. Family here? Okay, or Mr. Mrs. Smith here? Thank you. Mr. Smith, I understand you might be represented by an attorney.
Good morning, Chair.
Yes.
My name is Boyd Worley. I'm attorney. To your director of purposes of the record.
Could I could I pause you? If you could go speak into that microwave, microwave, oh my goodness. For the purpose of the recording, we can be sure that it's heard clearly.
Uh, my name is Boyd Worley. I'm a licensed attorney in North Carolina, primarily practicing in Columbus County. I do not do wills. So, um, primarily criminal litigation, I do some election litigation. I was a former county attorney for a period of time. I've been in this room on several occasions, and I just want to thank you all for the opportunity today. And the professionalism that I've experienced in very short notice. Coming from the county, I want to thank Ms. Sarah for accommodating me in a very short period of time. For purposes of the day, I do represent both Mr. And Mrs. Smith. This is kind of a quasi judicial hearing with an odd sort of setup. My request would be that I'd be able to sit over here to make sure that my voice is being recorded while. My clients stand here and answer any questions that you guys might have a question for me. Would that be okay?
Chair has no objections. Board?
Yeah, that'll be fine, sir. And you will have to forgive me. My hearing is not real good.
Okay.
So if I could ask you to speak up a little bit, I would. I'm kind of.
I'm happy to yell. I'm happy to yell. I was just trying to be polite.
My wife yells at me enough. But I I apologize that. You know, the hearing is seems to be going away with every birthday, so. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Damn close. Costco hearing aids are getting closer every day.
If I might, Mr. Chair, I can invite my clients up. I believe that there will be necessary oaths for them to take.
Feel free to question them, please. Thank you.
If Miss.
First, you need to. Explain to the challenge voter the qualifications for being registered.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Batten.
Yes, sir.
Explanation for voter qualifications. The qualifications are be a U.S. citizen. To reside in the county where registering and have lived here for at least thirty days before Election Day. Be at least eighteen years of age. And not being not being serving. A felony sentence, including probation, post release, supervision, or parole. So.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then I believe he would need to also give each of them that oath.
Okay. Just just so you folks understand. As a layperson, I've been on the board for twelve years. This is only the second hearing we've had in twelve years. It's the first one I've chaired. So if I rely on my director and my attorney for guidance. You appreciate that. Thank you.
Would you like me to administer?
And your name again, sir? I'm sorry, your your last name?
Worley, W O R L E Y.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Miss Smith, you can come to the podium. Place your left hand on the Bible, read your right. You swear that statements and information used given this hearing with respect to your identity and qualifications to be registered and to vote shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Worley, please proceed.
If I if I could, I do believe that Miss Smith has recently had knee surgery, has knee issues. I would like for her to sit down and I'll begin my questioning with Mr. Smith, if that's okay.
Without objections.
She hadn't had it yet. She had it to twenty third and then she's.
Okay.
You're the chair for her?
Ryan? Kevin? Yeah. Ryan? It's Chair. Okay, you got one? Okay. Thank you, sir. If you could speak up a little, Mr. Smith, I'd appreciate it.
I'm as hard of hearing as you are, so I understand. It's getting worse every birthday. I hearing aids, I have to keep them up and up and up.
At least we're here to complain about it.
Yeah, sir. I can read lips pretty good.
I'm sorry?
I can read lips pretty good.
Are you better than I?
If I might, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Smith. Could you state your name for the record, please, and your address?
My name is Richard F. Smith, Jr. I reside at twenty eight twenty three Ocean Boulevard West in Holden Beach.
And how long have you resided at eight twenty three Holden Beach?
We actually started the transition back in two thousand and seven. And when I I retired in twenty twenty, it became pretty much a full time. Full time residence. We both, she works part time and can do it remotely. So we spend about all of our time at Holden Beach. That's. That's where we live. That's where we have our clothes. That's where we have our food. That's where the kids come and join us. Uh, for special occasions and it's a. It's something that. If I may. Start at the beginning in nineteen fifty eight. My dad and uncle taught my grandfather into borrowing the money to buy two properties at Holden Beach. One right at the road, one out toward ocean. We got our house finished in nineteen sixty two. And in nineteen ninety five, after Hurricane, I think it was Fran Francis. Came through my dad and my uncle and his brother and sister said. That's it for us. We've we've rebuilt it enough times and we're at the age that we're. Gonna pass it on and I was able to. Buy the property, three quarters of it from them. And then my dad gifted. The remaining quarter. To me and my brother and sister. Shortly thereafter. At that point, I bought my sister out and it's just. Uh, the LLC states, I'm fifteen sixteenths owner and he's one sixteenth owner. But it's something that I promised my. Parents before their passing that I wouldn't. Make sure he stayed involved.
So if I understand that correctly, Mr. Smith, your connection to Holden Beach didn't begin in two thousand and seven. It began in what year?
It began, it actually began, I remember. Going to our house when I was five and six years old and actually went across a creek. Uh, before getting to our house. In fact, our end of the beach was called Robinson Beach. So it's, I've been there a while. I spent many a summer. At Holden Beach all summer long. I saw I met Ellen Holden when I was. Just a kid. Used to go up to his dad's pavilion and play games and stuff, so Holden Beach has always had a special place in my heart. And when we bought it in ninety five, that was the game plan. It was for us to 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 be able to get it paid for so when we retired, we could enjoy our life at the beach.
So fair to say you spent your formative youth in Holden Beach? You spent your formative youth in Holden Beach?
Yes, sir. Every every summer we would get out of school and. And when school let out and. Say June, May, June back then, we would not go back, actually go back. To our home in High Point until school started. Our dads and my uncles, I had my cousins there with me, of course, and they would come and visit on the weekends. So, you know, it was just, I'd go back to school well tanned and. Just hair turned white from being out in the sun so much, so it was. It's some of the best days and best memories of my life.
Well, that's an interesting point. Did you get your tan at High Point over the past, the course of this year at Holden Beach?
No. That does, Holden Beach is where we, I've got that. Beach flip flop tan with the V on your foot where the sun doesn't shine where your flip flops fit, so it's, that's where I get my tan.
Let me understand this. Your love for Holden Beach began in your.
Yes, sir.
And that planted that seed, but. What you, what did you do for a living?
I was, I worked for a company called Thomasville Buses. Uh, which you see some of them here in Brunswick County. I've actually been down here before in my tenure with Thomas. I was there for twenty one years. I was started out. When I went to work for Mr. Thomas and Mr. Price that owned Thomas Bus. They were grooming me to be the service person for the for the company. And for about eighteen months, I actually worked in the factory. Which was, I thought was terrible and cruel punishment. But as it turned out, I learned the bus from running in the back end. That was a good education for me. Uh, in my later years before retiring. I was in charge of the warranty and I would I would get on an airplane, she can attest to, just about every morning and fly somewhere. Because somebody was not happy with the buses that they received.
Well, let me understand this quickly. Thomas, that's a bus company.
Yes, sir. They they build.
Now, they're. We'll get into the details of the challenge to your qualifications in a minute, but with particular note that there is a. Aspect of that challenge that said you didn't have a mailbox.
Well, yes, sir. In fact. My mailbox was pretty well known on the island. It was the only school bus mailbox on the island.
It was a Thomas school bus.
Thomas school bus, yes.
Does the board have a copy of a picture of that old? Old? Mailbox?
Yes, sir. And until our letter carrier came to me. While I was out mowing the yard one day and asked me to please. Install a new mailbox because the one that I had, as most school buses do, rusted to the point that the door wouldn't stay on. And she said it's an extra effort to have to get out of the vehicle and put your door back on your mailbox. So I purchased a new one and 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 put it up. Indiana's been servicing my account, as you can see in my paperwork. For for seven years. Uh, the postmaster in supply got me that. Written notice from her.
But if I might be able to redirect you, Mr. Smith. We've talked about where your love for Holden Beach began. We've talked a little bit about your work. With that seed planting, carrying you forward, you indicated that your ultimate goal was to do what after you retired?
It was to live at Holden Beach as debt free as I possibly could be. And that and that's what I did. We got it paid for. Uh, we got, we were fortunate enough to buy some rental property when the, I guess the bottom fell out. And it got it paid for, so you know, we we don't have. You know, a lot of overhead. It's just Lori and I, unless the kids come like they are today. And it's, that's where we want. I don't hate to be morbid, but that's where I want to die, sir. That's, that's, in fact, my will. Uh, actually states that again, when I do, Lori and I either one perish. Our ashes will be. Sprinkled out in front of the ocean in front of our house. I will, I I love where I live.
If I might be able to touch on that, Mr. Smith, there's a case law that states that. Residency is acquired of where you attend, if you were to leave, where you intend to return. So when you leave on a vacation, where do you intend to return?
I'll come home.
Where's home?
Eight twenty three Ocean Boulevard West.
But you just told the board here that it's beyond that. You want your eternal home.
Well, yes, but we have eight grandchildren. We're blessed, I should say, with eight grandchildren. They all play sports. Uh, they, uh. Of course, when there's a special game, especially when some of the. My grandkids are go to different high schools when they play each other, it's important that Lori and I attend those games because it's, you know, it's. What grandparents are supposed to do. Twenty twenty, end of twenty twenty four. And the beginning of twenty twenty five. I was, uh. I was told I had stage three prostate cancer. So I've got, I didn't want to give those to you because it's public knowledge, but I went to fifty nine doctor visits. And spent quite a bit of time in the hospital and in rehabilitation. So it's, anytime that we were not actually. When I was in the hospital and stuff, there was nothing more I wanted to do than to go back home to Holden Beach.
So every fifty nine doctor visits that you went to, where did you intend to return?
My healthcare.
Where did you intend to return after those doctor's?
Home, Holden Beach. My, 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 sir, that's been. Uh, that's been my family home and my home all my life, and I don't, it's not going to change. Well, Mr. Smith. No matter where I go, I'm coming back to Holden Beach. Today, when I leave here, I'm going to Holden Beach.
If I might, Mr. Smith, a couple of things that we're going to go directly. That way the board can follow along with the documentation that you prepared. But a little bit, tell them you hold a certain position now. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I was, in twenty twenty one. I was, uh. Asked by some of my friends and and neighbors and people that were actually on the board of commissioners at Holden Beach. Asked me if I would take Woody Tyner's seat. On the board because of his heart attack and failing health. So I I volunteered and was placed on the board then. And since that time, I have. Attended a hundred and forty four meetings.
So let me understand this correctly. So let me understand this correctly. You didn't seek out a political office. They sought you out for political office.
Well, yes, sir. It was right after COVID. And it was, you know, there wasn't a lot of people wanting to get into that particular arena. And I actually, after my tenure for Woody's seat, when I ran for reelection, I ran unopposed. So it wasn't like everybody was jumping up and down trying to be a commissioner. And with my experience and love for Holden Beach, I thought I would probably be the best person for that job.
So let me understand this correctly. Someone sought you out for a position. Did anyone challenge your residency in twenty twenty-one?
No, sir. Nobody's ever challenged my residency.
When you swore in, did anyone challenge you for your residence?
No, sir.
When you filed for reelection, did anyone challenge you for your residence?
No, in fact, I went to Sarah's office and filled out the forms and nobody.
And for purposes of the record, you're referring to the director, Sarah, is it Laverne?
I I read the, I read what she had printed out. My only thing I probably didn't do right is I did put my High Point address on it. That's where I had had an office for a long time, but it's since been vacated.
And we'll get to that in a moment.
Yeah.
Have you filed for reelection for your office?
No, sir. I've, I feel like I have done the best I can for Holden Beach. The political arena has gotten rather toxic. And my, my wife thought it was best for both of us not to seek reelection, sir.
So you have sat in this position for over five years and no one has challenged your residency until three months left remaining?
Until now, and I've only got four more meetings.
Is there a particular vote taking place or an issue, a swing vote?
To my knowledge, no. It's it's I'm of the minority on the board. There's most of our votes end up with a three-two. And I'm on the two side, so it's, it's okay. That's that's the way we run, the way you guys run your deals, the way we ran ours. It's on the same day you do it, third Tuesday in every month.
Well, Mr. Smith, based on your tan and how well you talk, I want to be able to benefit the board with the packet that they have. So if I might be able to direct your attention to what we've submitted in the packet, okay?
Yes, sir.
We're going to be specifically going through, there is a challenge made and then there is a letter in support of that challenge by Mr. Filmy, I believe. And I believe you've broken it down in sections. And for purposes of the record, I know that Ms. Laverne did an excellent job making copies, but is it tabbed for the board?
It is. I was going to ask if I could make sure they could find it. So it's a like a orange salmon color sticky and it said challenged voters submissions Smith. So that is, that is where the documents he provided start. And once you find it, you'll notice I put little flags for every new number. They were numbered. So when they move on, you can just flip to the next, I don't know what color yours are, skinny flag.
Board ready?
Yes, I am.
Gentlemen? Okay, continue, Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to direct your, what I believe is Tab Two in my folder. I'm going to read out what the allegation is contained in Mr. Filmy's letter. And I want you to be, have an opportunity to respond. And I do believe we have supporting documentation associated with that. You know, first, there's a preamble in the letter that there's quite a bit of anxiety about the legitimacy of Mr. Smith, although you've been in your position for five years. And then as the first supporting documentation, according to the supposed anxiety, it says, Mr. Smith's official biography states that he has a long history with Holden Beach. But in his bio, nowhere does it state he is a legal resident of the town. So my understanding, and is it your understanding, that the first proposition about your residency is that your biography doesn't state that you're a legal resident of the the town? Does your biography state that you're not a felon?
No, sir, it doesn't state that.
But are you a felon?
No, sir.
Does it state that you're over eighteen years old?
No, sir. I am quite over eighteen.
So the fact that you don't state that you're a legal resident of the biography in the town, does that concern you? Or does that change your position of whether you intend to remain in Holden Beach as a permanent resident?
No, sir. I had the town clerk actually help me put that bio together. And I did, she did not say anything about any.
Okay, so for your biography, you coordinated with someone within the administrative offices in the county or in the Holden Beach municipality?
Yes, sir.
But you did give an interview when you got sworn in and got some notoriety associating with that swearing in, is that correct?
That is correct.
And is that in Tab Two? So this is something that you directly informed the public about, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's when I was sworn in, you see, if you've got a picture of me being sworn in, we still had to wear the COVID mask at that time. And when I was sworn in, of course, I got in by the beacon. And that's the last sentence in that article said, we were, we lived on Ocean Boulevard West at Holden Beach.
Because that's what you told them.
That's where I live, sir.
Because that's the truth.
Yes, sir.
Now, let's go to Tab Three. Now, this section deals with properties that you own and LLCs associated with it. And it might be confused, and I can understand why Mr. Filmy might be confused, right? There is a Sand Pebbles LLC. Tell me about Sand Pebbles LLC.
Yes, sir. The reason that my sister, brother and I put, well, it was my attorney's idea to put it into an LLC, since I own three quarters of it and they own, I own a third of a quarter. Sister owned a third of a quarter, my brother owned a third of a quarter, that it would be best for, to show ownership, to put it in an LLC so we could all be responsible for upkeep and in the proper percentages. My sister really never had any desire for Holden Beach. She's, she likes the mountains a whole lot better than the beach. So over the course of a couple of, well, about five years, I actually bought her out of the LLC financially.
And what year was that? What year did you buy her out?
Ninety-five.
Nineteen ninety-five. So you became a fifteen sixteenths owner of the property in nineteen ninety?
No, I didn't do that till two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven, okay. All right. And you list on the LLC paperwork, you list an address other than the Ocean Isle address?
Correct.
Tell me a little, or tell the board a little bit about that.
Well, it's a, it's a matter of, I guess, convenience. All of my, I guess it was all legal documents, go to my mailbox in in High Point. I have a brother, he's disabled, some wacky keys, you can't hear at all, sir. He can't hear at all. So he actually uses my property as a place to clean up cars and and detail cars and that kind of stuff. He also keeps my, keeps the garages, which I have, there's five separate garages, I collect cars and and keeps the house in order and gets the mail. Our, our accountant and the lady that has been doing our accounting now, she's the daughter of Steve Pace. But Shannon has been doing our accounting for their company for thirty years. And they're just right around the corner from the High Point address. So it makes it easy for him to to get that to her. And if there's any mail that I need to have, he'll either bring it to me if it's important or he'll put it in a envelope, bigger envelope, and send it to me at at home in Holden Beach.
Does he mail it to you?
Most of the time he mails it, yes, but.
It goes to an actual mailbox?
Yes. My mailbox is eight twenty-three, yes.
So you ever heard the term, don't fix what ain't broke? You've never heard that term? You've never heard the term, don't fix what ain't broke?
Yes, that's one of my favorite ones. I'm sorry, like Randy said, I'm hard of hearing. Boyd, it's it's something that in the school bus industry, that's something I use quite a bit. You know, people would complain about things that it's not broken. It functions the way it's supposed to. So it's, it's one of the, again, having that system in place has served me well. It, it kind of gives my brother some purpose, sir. I mean, he's, he's, he's disability. He hasn't worked a job in probably twenty-five years or better. So he gives him a place to go and something to do and something to feel like he's, my brother loves me to death and as I do him. And we, he looks after me and Lori really well.
Thank you for that. Now, there's also mention in there that eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West, Ocean Isle, was placed under a rental management company, Sand Pebbles. Do you rent out eight twenty-three?
No, sir. Most of the summer is, that's one way to get all the kids in one place for Christmas is that's when they can actually pick the weeks of the summer they get to come to the beach. Now, we have weeks or holidays where they come and it's just the kids. And and all my grandkids, the oldest was twenty-five. So now they can go to the beach for a week and invite their friends. So it's, the only time we rented the house was, as I said, when we started, I was trying to pay for it and I was trying to pay my sister off too. So at that time, some of the weeks during the summer, we did rent. But that was back in the late nineties, early, you know, the late nineties.
So the only time you ever rented out the eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard was in the nineties?
Yes, sir.
And since your retirement in twenty twenty?
Correct. About the third day, fifth day of January twenty twenty is when I was allowed to retire.
Let's say this, there's, I think there's three hundred and sixty-five days in a year, except when you get maybe to a leap year. Percentage-wise, in twenty twenty, how many days out of the month or out of the year would you stay at eight twenty-three Ocean?
I'd say probably a seventy-five, twenty-five. Again, I had, I've got grandkids and sporting events. And as you, as I'd said earlier, as I'm getting older, my doctor visits are becoming more frequent. So, you know, I've had the same physician in High Point since I was in my late teens. He actually bought the property for his practice from my grandfather. And the practice was across the street from my grandfather's house and it's still there. And he's still my doctor. And until he perishes, I'm going to continue to go to my doctor. I mean, he knows me, he knew my mom and dad, he knew my granddad. So it's, I'm not pulling up stakes when I've got a doctor that knows me that well.
So let me understand this. In twenty twenty, twenty-five percent of the time, you would not be at the Ocean Boulevard property?
Yes, sir.
But when you were gone, where did you intend to return and where did you return?
Always went back home.
Where's home?
To Holden Beach. So it's home.
And is that the same thing in twenty twenty-one, seventy-five, twenty-five breakdown?
That's, that's a pretty good average, yes, sir.
Twenty twenty-two?
It's pretty much a standard thing. We have, like I said, doctor visits and and sporting events that we like to attend and hurricanes. You know, when we have a hurricane here, it's, it's a place you can go and lay down and hope and pray when you come back home, you got a home left to come to.
Well, let's move on to Tab Four, if I might, Mr. Smith. Tab Four takes umbrage, apparently, that you and Ms. Lori are owners of certain properties off of Holden Beach.
Well, yes, sir. We were, as I said, when the, they call it the bottom fell out, there were quite a few foreclosures. And I was fortunate enough to have a, a local realtor that found me some property. In fact, it was quite an ordeal on the first one. But both of them were purchased out of foreclosure. And I took quite a bit of time to get them up to snuff. And they, the brick house now has been rented for seven years straight. I had a couple of others before that, but this family has moved in and that's what they consider home now.
Well, let's talk about these rental properties. So you and Ms. Lori do own them.
Yes, sir. They're paid for. And I pay taxes, we pay taxes on.
Certainly, because you don't live here, according to Mr. Filmy, you've got to pay someone to maintain those rental properties.
Yes, sir. The, I mow the grass. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a, a person that even though I don't live there, that's my property. And I'm a stickler for keeping the grounds, the bushes, the driveway, everything in order. I mow the grass. This summer's been a little bit of a pill because we've gotten so much rain. But I usually mow the, the front yards every two weeks and usually have to mow the backyards every week because of the septic tank system. I've got four kids and with that much water in the ground, the grass is going to grow. I also mow the property at the Oceanfront House, our house too.
So let me understand this correctly. You don't hire anyone out to do the landscaping and the maintenance?
Yes.
You do hire someone out? You do hire someone out or you don't?
No, sir. I don't hire anybody out.
So you maintain your two rental properties off the island?
Correct.
Mowing at least once a week for each property?
Yes, sir, unless it gets we run into a dry spell, yes.
Okay. You maintain your home?
Yeah.
And is that a once a week ordeal as well?
Well, yes, sir. It takes at least every other week in the summer. Again, it gets pretty dry and hot out on the beach, so it, the grass doesn't grow as fast. But, yeah, I do all the trimming, I do all the landscaping. Lori takes care of the flowers, so it's, it's.
What about your neighbors on the island?
Well, as I've got my neighbors here, I've, you know, at the beach, you know, our house, our front yard isn't as big as this room. And the neighbors are sometimes with the widths, widths of their driveways, it's, they're even smaller. So when I fire up the lawnmower, usually I'll mow my yard. And if I see my neighbors need it, I'll mow theirs too. I mean, it's, they're my neighbors.
Why, why mow a person's yard at a place you don't live?
What good neighbors do.
Well, Mr. Filmy says you're not a resident here. You're, you're not connected here.
I'm afraid he's wrong, sir.
So I understand it correctly. You maintain your properties?
Yes, sir.
You help your neighbors out?
Yes, sir.
Why?
I try to be a good citizen of Holden Beach.
Let's go on to Tab Five, if we may. Your statement of organization for your campaign lists your address at eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard?
Yes, sir.
Because that, why did you list that address?
That's where I live.
And is that where you intend to permanently remain?
Until my, until my demise.
And when you sojourn somewhere else, where do you return to?
Always return home, eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West.
But let's talk about this. There is some confusion, right? Let's talk about your driver's license.
Yes, sir.
What's on your driver's license?
My driver's license, as y'all can see, I had mine changed about a year ago. When Lori has hers changed in the next two years, she'll reflect the Holden Beach address. And when I went, it's difficult to get a, an appointment to get your driver's license renewed. So I had to get it renewed like seven o'clock in the morning and the officer was in, we were talking. And I had my water bill and stuff from Holden Beach and I was going to change it to the Holden Beach address. And he said, he said, you're going to have to change all your registrations. I said, I don't want to change my registrations, oh, my car registrations. I said, I've got, you know, I've got a car registered in Holden Beach, but I've got others, collector cars, that I don't want to change them. Because if you change the address, you mail in the title and you get back the new North Carolina titles.
So let's talk about that for a minute. How many vehicles do you have that are classic vehicles?
I've got fifteen. I'm a car nut too. I can't help it. But a lot of my cars, sir. But a lot of my cars, sir, two of them are my, two of them are my grandparents' cars. One's a fifty-ohs will be that is still got the old, original, big, green titles. If you're at my age or shortly, maybe a little younger. Back in the day, the titles were were big, big, green pieces of paper. And that's what I want to keep with those antique automobiles. Now, the the newer ones, okay, didn't matter so much, but he said I was going to have to change all of them. And I said, man, I I don't want to do that. You know, that's that's just not not what I want to do. He said, then you're going to have to leave this address. So seven o'clock in the morning, okay, let's leave it like it is. And that's why it's still there. But I if it's going to make a difference in my residency or my ability to vote, I'll I'll change them immediately. I just won't change some of the cars.
So let me understand this. If you have a different address on your driver's license, the address on your driver's license, is that reflective where you intend to remain?
No, that's does not.
Is that reflective of where you want to permanently abide?
No, sir, it does not.
Does that reflect where you want your ashes to be spread?
I'm going to reside at Holden Beach.
So you go to a Thomasville DMV office and they say that you've got to switch over fifteen car registrations?
Yes, sir.
And out of convenience, you just leave them where they are?
Unfortunately, it was convenience and the desire not to change, want to change some of the titles. It was a, like I said, seven o'clock in the morning, it was a hasty decision, but in hindsight, it was not the right decision.
Now, if we're on section excuse me, that was section five. Let's go to section six or tab six, excuse me, for purposes of the record. Tab six, the Mr. Filmy's letter says, further, there is no mailbox at eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West Holden Beach, North Carolina. We've previously addressed that somewhat, but I want to direct the board's attention and direct your attention to some of the attachments there. I believe it might be the fourth page. Is that the Thomas School Bus mailbox that you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Now, I've got to ask this question. Tell me, Ms. Smith was adamant that she wanted you to change the mailbox too? Because that thing's old.
Well, the the mail carrier is the one that suggests that I do it because of its failing condition.
Okay. And you changed that out how long ago?
I had the mailbox here since probably before two thousand, probably ninety-six, ninety-seven.
Reflective of your employment with Thomas?
It was kind of, it was how I would tell people to find us at at Holden Beach.
But at some point?
Here to the school bus mailbox.
At some point, you change it to a new mailbox?
Right.
When did that happen?
Sometime last year. I mean, I I had two up for a while. But I took the other one, it had disintegrated to the point I just took it from
So do you have a picture enclosed in your submissions in tab six reflecting the current mailbox?
That is the current mailbox, yes, sir.
And it, if I look at it correctly, it says eight twenty-three on the side of it.
That's my address, sir.
Now, is it possible that Mr. Filmy might be looking at the wrong address?
Well, there was there's a couple circumstances that that led me to that decision or that assumption. One was that I didn't have a mailbox and number two, that I had a coastal realty sign in my yard. I've never had either, I've had a mailbox, but I've never had a coastal realty sign. So I said, well, maybe is he looking at the wrong house? It's it was a question that I had in my mind, you know, to I mean, the mailbox right next to the street and a coastal realty sign is would be pretty visible. It would be, I guess, attached to the house or something. But
And we'll get to that in a moment, but there's also a the owner of Coastal Realities manager there actually reflects that he's never rented to.
Correct. I went after I got, we had the hearing. I went to their office and I talked to the vice president. And she wrote me a note and said that we had never had any association, that we had never rented our property or never asked them for any help whatsoever. She did state that the property next door, they do have a coastal realty sign on. So and they don't have a mailbox. So I that's what kind of leads me to believe maybe Mr. Filmy was was looking at the wrong house.
Well, that might actually make you feel a little bit better that this, it just might be a big misunderstanding.
That I'm not sure. I don't know why anybody would really want to monitor me. I'm just a regular guy.
But staying on tab six, in addition to the photograph, you actually have a letter from your mail carrier, is that correct?
Yeah, Deanna, I she, you know, comes by every day about eleven o'clock. I see her quite often. Her name's Deanna Brown. She's been carrying my mail for, I didn't realize it had been seven years. I thought it had been about five. But I called Scotty, he's the postmaster in in supply and asked him if I could get some verification of my mailbox being there and delivered my mail picked up and delivered there. And he says, well, yeah, he he didn't know me. But he said, there's been a slot in this in this post office for you since the building was built. And that's the new supply post office. So it's been a long time, but Deanna could only, you know, testify as well to the fact that she had been doing it for the past seven years and picking up my mail.
And for purposes of the record, she writes a letter and says, my name is Deanna Brown. I'm the regular carrier of Route Four in Supply. I've been delivering mail to Rick Smith at eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard for seven years. This is the lady that wanted you to switch your mailbox?
Yes, sir. They put up, actually put a mail stamp on it.
And I find this an interesting anecdote. You you refer to individuals by their first name. Who's Scotty, for purposes of the record?
I just, I I'm a I'm a friendly person. My uncle was the postmaster in High Point when I was a young man. So I always thank her for her for for doing what she does. It's a thankless job, sticking mail in a box all day, but I try to I try to be nice to people.
Well, how is it that it's possible, if we assume Mr. Filmy's assertions are true, that you live in High Point, North Carolina, that you have all this familiarity with all of these individuals in Holden Beach? Scotty, for example?
I just, I know that when I get a package that won't fit in my mailbox, I have to go to the supply post office and pick it up. Because it's not a, I don't have one of them great, big boxes. I've got just a standard mailbox. Well, I'll have to go into the postal office there in supply and they put the little note in my box and pick up my packages.
Well, certainly, assuming argument that Mr. Filmy's assertions are true, that you have all your magazines and periodicals sent to your High Point address for you to enjoy?
I have magazines sent there. I have them sent to eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West.
Why?
That's where we live.
And do you have that enclosed in tab six?
Yes, I've got, I think I didn't count, but there's a a lot of magazines. I mean, I like to keep up with what's going on in the world. We've been subscribing to the Brunswick Beacon, which is also in that section. And I contacted the lady at the Brunswick Beacon and I've been taking that paper since twenty twenty-one. And I've really been taking it longer than that because it was in my dad's name.
So let me understand this correctly, you subscribe to Coastal Living?
Yes.
And looks like the address is eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard?
Correct.
Better Homes and Gardens?
Yes.
Is that yours or Miss Miss Smith's?
Miss Smith's.
Okay, maybe gardening gun, it's a debate, but that Better Home, okay. Motor Trend?
That's me, I'm a gardener.
That's Miss Smith?
No, that's me.
Okay, all right. What address is it at? Eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard?
Yeah.
People Magazine, you are Miss Smith?
We both like that one.
Okay. Eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard?
Yes, sir.
Time?
That's more me. It goes to eight twenty-three.
And the Brunswick Beacon, you have the listing from twenty twenty-one in which you subscribed?
Yes, sir. That's an ongoing subscription.
Why want to keep up with the comings and goings at the Brunswick Beacon when you live in High Point?
Don't live in High Point. Brunswick Beacon allows allowed me to put articles in for when I needed to rent my homes. I would go to their office and put in a, you know, available rental property. And they were very helpful and it's
And you also have reflective other items of mail that have been sent to you?
Yes.
Also, has there ever been a voter registration card sent to eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard via first class mail?
Yes.
And it didn't get returned, did it?
No, sir.
Because why?
Well, I got it out of the mailbox.
You're aware that the statutory language says it's prima facie evidence that if something is sent via first class mail is returned, that it's prima facie evidence, so you don't reside there? But that didn't happen, did it?
No, sir, I've never had any mail returned.
Think that would be prima facie evidence that you do reside there?
Yes, sir.
Next, let's still in tab six. Since you don't live there, probably don't have a lot of water and sewage, a high water and sewage bill?
No, it's it's they're kind of Holden Beach, we just up the water prices again here recently, but that's I I get my water bill at home, Holden Beach, and I always pay it in person. I go, I'm, you know, up and down the road all the time and town halls between my house and the bridge and on the way off the bridge. So I ride by and I'll give it to the girls in the office. I've, over my six years, I've gotten to know all the personnel there in Town Hall. And it's a good time to to talk a little bit and I have a mail slot there. Any mail that is sent to us commissioners to Town Hall and I'll gather that when I stop by also.
Well, if I understand correctly, in tab six, you have available bills that you've gotten recently, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Specifically around the time that your registration or your qualifications to be a voter was challenged?
Yes, sir.
And if I understand, for the month of April, excuse me, the month of May, well before the filing of this, in prime rental season, right? You had five thousand eight hundred and sixty-five usage or gallons of order utilized?
May, yes, sir.
And you had a bill of a hundred and forty-one dollars?
Yes, sir.
And then you have another one that's a hundred and seventy-seven and twenty-two cents, which suggests that you utilize a little bit more water. And then you had one for a hundred and thirty-six, so fair to say that you probably have an average about a hundred and fifty-dollar bill a month?
Just about year round.
Now, this board's got to believe that you're the one utilizing that water and not renters?
Well, my kids use water. I use water. Everybody's got to have, take a shower and I have a I think the reason that one bill was a little higher, I've got a hose out on the end of the walkway at the ocean. So before you walk in the house, you rinse your feet off. And that hose developed a leak that I had to repair and I ran a little extra water there for a day or two before I realized it was leaking.
Also, since you don't live in Holden Beach, the Amazon packages must be piling up at your front door?
No, they usually, well, I can usually hear them coming, but they usually leave them beside the the door, inter side entrance door, and I gather them up as soon as I get them. Sometimes they'll leave them downstairs, but most of the time they bring them up on the porch.
And you've got in tab six, multiple Amazon orders delivering boxes to your address?
Well, yes, sir. I mean, that's become the convenient way to buy stuff is I don't do it all the time. I'm a I'm one that likes to look at it, hold it, feel it, make sure it's what I want before I buy it. And when you buy on Amazon, sometimes you're, you know, looking in a picture. I like I like to see what I'm getting.
Mr. Smith, could you just raise the microphone in front of you up a little?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
I can lean forward a little bit too if I need to.
Mr. Smith, we might move on to tab seven. Tab seven addresses a document that Richard Smith and Lori Mabesmith respectfully have voted in Holden Beach using the eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West Holden Beach address since two thousand and seven. Would you agree with that?
Oh, yes, sir. We haven't, we haven't missed an election. We we feel like it's our 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 right to vote. And we have never been registered to vote anywhere else in North Carolina or anywhere else in the United States, other than Holden Beach in Brunswick County, North Carolina.
So the only place you and Miss Smith have ever voted?
Period.
Is in Holden Beach?
Correct.
Or in Brunswick County and then for municipal elections, Holden Beach?
Yes, yes. I just wasn't, I wasn't much into politics. I was too busy working and raising kids. So I didn't really, didn't really, voting was just something, well, we'll just see what the outcome is. I wasn't that involved. But once we got into the Holden Beach community, we realized that, you know, every vote counts. So that's what we wanted to do is we wanted to be win and register to vote again in the Board of Elections office and signed up and have not missed an election. We make sure, we usually go early. And that's, you know, the best way to go instead of having to stand in line, so that's a, that's our normal routine.
So suffice to say, you began at the very latest formulating desire in wanting to establish your permanent forever home to return to in Holden Beaches in two thousand and seven?
That's correct.
Are you aware of the statutory language that says if a person goes into another state, county, municipality, or precinct or ward and while there, exercises the right of a citizen by voting in an election, that person shall be of considered to have lost his residence in that state, county, municipality, precinct, ward, or other election district from which that person was removed? So are you aware that when you voted in two thousand and seven, statutorily, that created the abandonment of your High Point address where you permanently reside?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I've never, like I said, I've never voted anywhere else.
So you've never voted anywhere else?
Never.
So would you vote in off your elections, municipal elections?
Yes.
Do we have a copy of your voting history in tab seven?
I got that from Sarah, yes.
And so that's available for the board to preview?
Yes, they've got that in the paperwork also.
Well, Mr. Smith, I believe Mr. Filmy also did a Google search or did some manner of background check, don't know if it was free or costed money, but or cost money. And it lists you as the twenty-four oh eight Midview Drive, High Point, North Carolina?
That's the shop in High Point.
Okay.
I don't live there anymore.
It doesn't reflect anywhere in this background check, quote unquote, about eight twenty-three Ocean?
It does. It has the eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard telephone number, nine one oh eight four two two one two two.
Sometimes these background checks, because the your home is in an LLC, it doesn't capture that information?
That is probably the the reason for that, I would imagine. Also, they didn't have the right place of employment. They had properties that I've never owned listed there. It was, it was rather
Well, doesn't that make you feel a little bit better that that might be a misunderstanding based off inaccurate Google search?
Again, the internet is only as good as the internet can be.
What I also find amazing is I think it also says that you and your wife aren't married.
Well, as of the second of this month, we have been married thirty-five years.
Believe it says, what is Lori Mabes' phone number? And it has nine one zero eight four two two one two two. Is that a cell phone or a landline?
Landline, our house at eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West and has been for as long as I can ever remember.
Is Lori Smith married? And it says, does not appear to be married. Um, are you?
Yeah.
Suffice to say, how much credibility you put in this document right here?
Again, it's the information that I think, as you have stated, with that with the LLC listing, that it would not reflect that. But if somehow they picked up the right telephone number, but the the wrong address.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I want to turn your attention to tab eight and I think this one might, gives you a little bit of concern. It appears that in the sworn statement from Mr. Filmy, he's effectively stated that he's been monitoring perhaps the wrong property, but attempting to monitor you for a period of years.
That is, that is very That is, uh, that is very disturbing to me. And even more disturbing to my wife. Uh, neither one of us have done anything wrong. And to have someone in the eyes of the state of North Carolina, I believe that's called stalking. And it's, uh, it is worrisome to the point where we, uh, used to never lock our doors or anything because Holden Beach is a safe place to be. But, uh, we, we, we have to, man. We don't know, we don't know what.
Well, are you aware of Mr. Filmy or his cohorts being private investigators?
Not, not to my knowledge, no, sir. And he lives, Mr. Filmy lives about six miles from my house on the opposite end of the island.
I'm gonna read this language to you. I monitored the house from July two thousand and twenty-three through December two thousand and twenty-four. During that period in the house, had a rental sign for coastal vacation resorts. It had different cars parked in the driveway every week during the summer. Once the season closed, the house was dark and empty except for Thanksgiving two thousand and twenty-four. Okay? I saw Mr. Smith enter eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West Residence once after a commissioner's meeting. I want to unpack this little by little. Are you familiar with the statutory, uh, North Carolina General Statute of Stalking?
Yes, sir, I am.
Fourteen dash two seventy-seven point three A states that observing or monitoring the victim effectively on more than two occasions for purposes of harassment and not a qualified private investigator could be considered a criminal act?
Yes, sir.
So effectively, one of the sworn testimonies regarding this challenge is effectively engaging in criminal activity to support this challenge?
In my opinion, yes.
Now, but it goes back to a sign of coastal vacation resorts. I believe you previously testified that you've never had affiliation with him or certainly did not have a sign up in twenty-three to twenty-four, and I think we have a statement to that effect. Is that correct?
That's correct. I got it from the Vice President of Coastal Realty.
Now, if I might, and we'll go a little bit out of order, but I believe it might be in section thirteen or tab thirteen? Don't have a tab thirteen?
Was it a letter from the rental company?
Letter from the rental.
Yeah, I remember seeing that somewhere.
What's that? Eight C? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's my thirteen, if that helps. If, Mr. Chair, if you might afford me one moment? And does that statement, I don't know whether the chair or the board's been able to find that section, not just because of?
Did you all find that document?
Do you have another copy of that if they aren't able to find it?
Let's search all the receipts.
If you can retrieve your document, um, and see if you can find it real quick.
Eight C?
Got it. Mr. Smith, did you have a statement from that coastal or the coastal properties manager saying that there's never been a sign? Do you believe that there might be comings and goings from your neighbor's property that they're referring to?
If I may?
Oh. Thank you so much, Mrs. Smith. It's a letter dated July twenty-first. To whom it may concern, Coastal Vacation Resorts does not currently manage the property located at eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West, nor did we manage the property and have a rental sign on the home from July of two thousand and twenty-three through December of two thousand and twenty-four. As stated in a letter to Mr. Smith showed me today from Michael Filmy. We do, however, manage the home next door at eight twenty-one Ocean Boulevard West and have a sign on that property.
Yes, sir.
Are your neighbors at eight twenty-one here?
I've got neighbors that are here today, yes, sir.
Are they the ones at eight twenty-one or are they on the other side?
They're the ones that rent those. I've got the neighbors on the other side of here.
Now, it says that he only saw, Mr. Filmy, only saw Mr. Smith enter the eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West Residence once after a commissioner's meeting.
I usually don't go home after a commissioner meeting. It's usually starts before supper time and ends way after supper time. So I usually, when I leave, I either go to one of the local restaurants and get something to eat. And if it runs late, I have to go all the way to Shiloh sometimes to get something to eat. There's, uh, you know, my wife goes to bed early and I'm, I'm not gonna let her stay up cooking all night waiting on me to get home from the commissioner meeting. So I, most of the time, most all of the time, when I leave, I go across the bridge and go to the, the hot buffalo or up to the mini jalapeno or some of the parties or somewhere, and if they're closed, I'll drive into Shiloh and go to Chili's.
Well, if I understand correctly, if he isn't able to see your vehicles there, you must have an open port underneath your house that an individual is able to see?
No, sir. I, I, we were lucky to have that grandfathered in years ago. I don't think it's, uh, you can do it now, but I have it enclosed. My entire bottom of my house is enclosed and it will hold three vehicles. Again, being a car nut, when I get home, I open the door, pour the car inside, and I shut the door. There's two dehumidifiers under my house to try to keep that salt air from destroying my vehicles. So I park them under the house where it's enclosed, insulated, stays warm, and is dehumidified as you can be, being on the oceanfront.
Now, I believe in section eight or tab eight of the submissions, you've been gracious enough to show how a garage works.
Yes, sir.
And in one of the photographs, we have a white vehicle outside of a garage.
Right.
Next photograph has a garage door open with the vehicle going in it.
Correct.
Another photograph showing a garage door going down and seeing a portion of the car. And then a final photograph of a closed garage door.
Correct.
That last photograph, are you home at that moment in time, even though I can't see a car?
That, that, yes, sir.
And then a photograph after that, you have an entire photograph of that.
Yes, and I have more than one vehicle under my house. The only vehicle that stays outside is my boat.
And also within eight C, or within eight, excuse me. You ever heard the term, you live where you spend your money?
Yes, sir.
Where do you spend your money in?
Holden Beach. I always try to keep the money at home.
You've gathered some of the receipts together, correct?
Yes, sir. I know, I know that that section has a, a lot of receipts in it. Uh, it, it was difficult to get them all. I've actually brought the originals, uh, with me. I keep really good records. And I keep records of, uh, what we spend, uh, both at the grocery store. And oh my gosh, Lowe's Hardware is, those are my two favorite. Between the chapel, Lowe's Hardware and Food Line, that's usually where you will find me. Uh, working on my rental houses or working on, on our home on the oceanfront. Uh, it's, it's a lot of them, but again, I just gave you copies. Who I have brought with me today, the originals, if you would like to see any of those. And I also brought what we've already started in two thousand and twenty-five. And there's a little hitch in that for about, about thirty days, I was either in the hospital or in the rehab.
Well.
Trying to get.
I don't want to belabor the point, Mr. Smith, but let's take two thousand and twenty-three for example. Well before there's accusations you're not a resident there. If I were to count the receipts up, it would be thirty-five, thirty-six receipts from Food Line.
Yes, sir.
That would be thirty-five, thirty-six different visits to Food Line purchasing items. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
My math isn't so good, but that's a little bit better than every other week?
Well, that's, we, especially during the summertime when it's so, so crazy at the Food Line, we try to go every other week. It's just Lori and I. And we do eat out quite a bit. It's just about as cheap to go out to eat as it is to buy and prepare food.
So you go to the Food Line thirty-four, thirty-five times in two thousand and twenty-three, about once every ten days?
Yes, sir.
You're also going to Lowe's? And because this is just a rental house that you're wanting to rent out to individuals, I'm certain that you just have cheap DDT furniture that you have contained in the home?
Correct. We, uh, the furniture.
You've got cheap DDT furniture, beach furniture in the home?
Uh, no, sir. Me and my wife is, uh, been in the furniture industry since she was eight years old. Her dad actually built furniture. It was something she's a, a stickler about. And, uh, the, the furniture we had uh, lasted a, a long time because it was very well-built William Allen furniture. And the furniture we just purchased last year is made by the Swaim Manufacturing Company. And, uh, it took all my son-in-laws and grandsons to get that stuff up, up to stamps and in the house. Really heavy, well-built furniture.
I'm gonna move on from that, but there are other documents that the board is welcome to review.
Yes, sir.
Right? I want to go to tab nine. As a matter of information, this is what Mr. Filmy's letter says. Mr. Smith attends most regular monthly committee meetings, but attends most other meetings telephonically from High Point. I guess you and Mr. Filmy were hanging out in High Point?
No, sir.
Have you had the occasion to go through and request the entire, your entire meeting history?
Yes, sir. I got that. I requested that from Heather Fennel, our town clerk. And she sent me my attendance records from the, the day I started up until, well, they didn't have last month's on it. But I was there. Uh, so it was a total of a hundred and forty-four meetings.
And I want to be cautious, uh, here. I don't know, is it nine? The third page in nine, does it have?
That's ten.
That's ten.
Excuse me, ten. I've got nine and ten here, but it's almost a redundancy. I want to make sure that we're on the right page here. In ten, it reflects on the third sheet, and attendance record says two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five.
Yes, sir. That's a total of a hundred and forty-four meetings.
Purposes of the record, it's got a matrices or a matrix box here, and it has dates listed out under each year. Okay? And then it has dates in left-hand column, and then it'll have a letter on the right-hand column.
Yes.
All right? In two thousand and twenty-one, on the right-hand column, it has a lot of whys. What does that why mean?
I mean, I attended the meetings.
And so in two thousand and twenty-one, you've got April all the way to August seventeenth. It's all whys. And then one September, it was a phone, uh, attendance.
Yes.
You were in High Point?
No, sir.
Where were you?
I was in Aruba, I think, on that, that particular time.
If the note says Jamaica, would that be more accurate?
Well, we, we, we like to go to, uh, to warm weather places. We don't like to snow ski or anything like that, but Jamaica, we've been there twice, and, uh, Aruba, I think we've been there five times.
Well, tell me this.
Kind of a go-to getaway vacation place.
Are the, these are listing of all the meetings?
Every one of them, yes, sir.
Are you scheduling vacations during your regularly scheduled meetings?
No, sir. In fact, we pretty much schedule our life around our meetings, just like you guys. I mean, you guys know that you've got a meeting on the third Tuesday of every month. And you try to make arrangements to be here every time. That's what you, sounds, like I said, that's what I signed up for. So we, uh, try to never miss a regular scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting.
Two thousand and twenty-two, perfect attendance.
Pretty much.
Did they give you, give you an award that year or no?
Uh, as you guys up here know, you don't get much thanks for doing what you do, but, uh, I, my fulfillment is in my heart.
Two thousand and twenty-three, all whys, another perfect attendance, gold star.
Yes, sir. It's kind of hard to do that if you don't live there.
Two thousand and twenty-four, we do have some phones. Five, January. It was a phone-in. Was that a regularly scheduled meeting or a special?
It was a special call meeting.
Okay. Um, that was holiday travel.
Holiday travel, those were, those were, uh, special meetings. But we had been, for years, we'd have maybe four budget meetings. That particular year, I think we had fifteen.
Seven, February, you had a phone-in. And you've got written out a doctor's visit on seven, February of two thousand and twenty-four. Phone-in visit on nine, February. So two days later, I can't read your handwriting. It looks like arson, but I don't think it's arson is what you wrote in there. What is, what is, uh?
I think that's Aruba.
Aruba, okay. I can see that too. Um, next, you go all the way down to June seventh and June twelfth, and it says no attendance or in. There was a family vacation.
Yes, sir.
Um, was that a regularly scheduled meeting?
No, sir. Those were special meetings.
But where did that family vacation entail?
It told us going to Florida, sir.
Went to Florida. When you came back from that family vacation, where did you intend to return to? Where did you return to?
Eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West.
When you came back from Jamaica in two thousand and twenty-one, where did you intend to return to?
Holden Beach.
Holiday travel, five, January, two thousand and twenty-four, where did you intend to return to?
Holden Beach.
Now, in two thousand and twenty-five, I think you had touched on it, but you received some news about your health.
Yes, sir.
And that news is that you were diagnosed with stage three cancer. And it necessitated you going to see certain specialists. How many specialists did they have on Holden Beach?
I didn't understand.
How many specialists for the type of cancer you have do they have on Holden Beach?
Still didn't quite understand.
Do they have any specialists for your type of cancer on Holden Beach?
No, not on Holden Beach by no means. In fact, Wake Forest Baptist Hospital, it was based out of Winston-Salem, have a premier, uh, robotic surgeon there. His name is Mr. Rodriguez. And I had to wait a few extra weeks to get Mr. Rodriguez to do my surgery. But he was one of those guys, you look up and he's the guy that trains people on how to do robotic surgery. So I did, I thought, you know, I don't, I don't know if any of you guys have ever had that air sucked out of a room when they tell you you've got cancer. But when, uh, when they do, you want, you want the best of the best. I, I want to see my great-grandkids. So yes, sir, I went to.
Did you make that public? Did people know that? Do people know that you were going through that health issue at the time?
No, sir.
So Mr. Filmy might not have known.
I, I, I can't answer that. I don't know what he would know, but I wouldn't.
I mean, to be certain, an individual that knew that you had cancer going to necessitating visits wouldn't accuse you of not residing there because you weren't at a meeting?
No, sir. It's, it's, I let the town clerk know and I, via a, a, a letter that she shared with the rest of the board of the issues I was having. And, and my apologies, and asked them to try not to vote on any major things until I got back, which I didn't miss the two meetings. That's, that one was because I was in the hospital and the other was because I was not allowed to travel.
Positive note, full remission?
Yes, sir. I went, uh, thirtieth of July and got my second checkup and I was cancer-free. And then just, uh, a week or so ago, right after our anniversary, I had to have another test and, uh, it came back, the pathology came back as no cancer, so. as I stand here today, I'm, I'm pretty confident I'm cancer-free right now. Yes, sir.
So if I understand correctly, in the course of your tenure, that for a position that you were sought out to do, you had 114 meetings and you missed seven?
Yes, sir.
And you phoned in majority of the ones that you missed?
Exactly. Yes, sir.
And because of dire medical news, you might have missed a couple in 2025?
It was beyond my control. Goodness, good Lord, look after me.
Want to go on to tab 11. Um, Mr. Filmy talks about R and K investments. Can you tell the board a little bit about R and K investments?
Yes, sir. Uh, my dad was a really smart man. And, uh, what he wanted to do was give us kids their house because they had gotten to the point where they had to go into some senior living facility where they could be, be looked after. Uh, it was me being here and as much as I was, it was my sister living in Charlotte. It was quite the burden on my, my brother. He just couldn't handle it. So we put him in a, uh, senior living facility and, uh, my dad divested himself and put, gave the kids, Ricky, Nancy, Kenneth, R, N, K, their house and their rental property. And again, we put it in a LLC for management purposes. Again, that way Ricky, Nancy and Kenneth know what the maintenance costs are, where the rent money goes. And at the end of the year, if there's a surplus with, you know, a little bit of, oh, my goodness, money is kept in the bank, we'll distribute it. But that's, uh, we, we've been doing it. My brother collects the rent on those homes. He also maintains two of the three. One of them, the young man takes care of hisself. But, uh, my brother gets the rent, puts it in the bank, uh, takes care of the, e- every aspect of that R and K LLC. Again, I wanted, my little brother have, has a purpose in life. He's, like I say, hadn't worked in a while and has some disabilities and want him to, uh, be part of the program. So he, he takes care of that, does a great job. Uh, if we need a plumber, he knows the people to call. We need an electrician, he knows people to call. Uh, need tree stream, he called, takes care of that. Kenneth does a great job of looking after that R and K.
But let me talk about this. We do utilize the 2408 High Point address on that.
And we have the same sharing, uh, Steve Pace's office has been our, Shannon, excuse me, has been our auditor for 30-plus years. It's just convenient. It's, everything goes there. When, when we get it, uh, the information uh, to turn in to the Secretary of State for the LLC, he delivers it directly to Shannon.
That's what your accountant does?
That's my.
He does all of it?
He gets all the tax notices. She gets everything.
And that also applies to your taxes, doesn't it?
Yes.
Now, you got to tell this board, you've been adamant about what you do day in, day out, but on your driver's license and your taxes, it says a High Point address.
Again, it's convenience. Uh, I would have, I would have never thought, in other words, this is, I, I just would have never thought that trying to do something good, somebody would try to make me look bad. But I, out of convenience, again, to have all that information shipped to one place where my brother can get it, he knows what the tax forms look like. He knows what important papers that I need to see look like. And he'll mail those to me and the others, he takes directly to Shannon. She pays out of our escrow account. She pays all the taxes and insurances and that sort of stuff. Now, my car insurance comes to Holden Beach in my house here. Cause I, people get all that, make sure that the, the values are correct.
And you've got a Jeep registered here?
Yeah, I've got, my, my Jeep's been registered here, yes.
Well, that was done how many years ago?
Thirty. I mean, it's been my, that's my, that's my pride and joy. Everybody's got to have a beach Jeep. I don't believe in golf carts. I think they're terribly dangerous. It's, uh, I've used it to teach every one of my kids how to drive a straight gear. It's, uh, just what I, that's my daily driver. That's what I get in, hop in and dive up and down the beach.
Let's move on. I believe you've collected a certain amount of statements. I don't know what, um, tab it would be based upon me believing it was 12, and I don't think there is a 12.
Just the last one. I didn't number them.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
So your last little sticky.
Uh, thank you very much. You have several statements from multiple individuals around Holden County and, or excuse me, Holden Beach in Brunswick County.
Yes, sir. I'm blessed to have some really, really good neighbors. Uh, we all look after each other. Uh, we're all, none of us are as young as we used to be, and it's good to have somebody keeping an eye on you, sir.
I mean, we've got one from Elizabeth Rickenbach. Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Rickenbach. Yes, sir.
All right. And it says, we now live full-time at Holden Beach from September to May and see Rick, meaning you, almost daily. Soon after our purchase of eight fifteen O B W, which I believe is a shorthand for.
Two houses, three houses down.
Um, they live right down the door from, fair to say?
Yes, sir.
Do you know, does Mr. Filmy live on the same street you do?
No, sir. He is six miles from my house.
Okay.
Opposite end of the island.
So do you think a better characterization of your comings and goings will be someone that maybe is committed stalking and lives on the opposite end of the county? Or your neighbors?
My neighbors. We socialize with them. We eat out with them. We cook out together. We celebrate holidays together. I've got some really good neighbors.
You got even Archibald's Deli talking about how much money you spend there.
Well, we, we eat there a lot. It's, uh, the, the lady that runs that place is a, a really nice person. We enjoy going in. It's a nice light atmosphere. And it's one of our favorite go-to eateries.
So when you cook, y'all go out and eat, fair to say?
Yes, sir.
That'll work. Those are the questions I have for you, Mr. Smith. Um, I know that we've belabored many points, but I believe it's important. Um, I'll turn it over to the board if they have any specific questions for Mr. Smith. I'll turn it over to the board, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Mr. Smith, thank you very much. Uh, we've been at this for quite a while. The chair would like to take a five-minute recess.
I understand, sir. I appreciate that very much.
So if we can be back in about, uh, 20 of, okay, the chair would appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That is my apologies. Don't include that to Mr. Smith.
Sorry.
That's my apologies if we belabored on.
No, not at all. At this point, um, if the board has questions for Mr. Smith? Larry? Nope. Mr. Lewis? No. Mr. Meyer?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Smith, thank you very much. You've been very thoughtful and informative presentation. Thank you.
I appreciate y'all's time. I know this is a special meeting for y'all and you have to take extra time out of y'all's lives, but I appreciate it because this is awfully important to me and my wife Lori. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If I might, as a point of privilege, Chair, I promise you I will not be as long.
Mr. Worley, I'm having a very hard time understanding your.
I promise you I will not be as long with Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Okay.
Like to continue?
Thank you. Ms. Smith, how are you today?
I'm fine.
And as a point of privilege, just want to check with the county attorney, anything administratively you would like to do with Ms. Smith before I ask her some questions?
Yes.
Yep, but yes. We just met, I didn't know. Okay, perfect. Ms. Smith, your, your husband testified for a while. Um, did you hear you were present during the entire course of this hearing for his testimony?
Yes.
You heard about his schedule and the percentage of times that you lived here?
Yes.
Um, do you have any additions or corrections to make to his testimony?
I don't need any corrections, no.
You reside here permanently?
Yes, sir.
You want this to be your permanent home?
Yes, sir.
It is your permanent home?
It is my permanent home.
When you leave, where do you intend to come back to?
Eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West.
Do you and your husband keep relatively the same schedule?
Yes, sir.
Now, I say relatively because you are still employed.
I am part-time employed and I do work remotely and by phone.
So Mr. Smith got out before you did?
Yes. He's a little older than I am.
Well, Mr. Smith's only, considering Mr. Smith's only 38 years old, you know, you guys are holding it well now. Um, but you are employed. How does that impact where you reside? Because are you employed with a company out of Holden Beach?
No, I'm employed with Swaim Furniture in High Point, North Carolina.
And how long have you been employed with them?
With Swaim, uh, 10 years.
And do you work at a brick and mortar location? Is it remotely? Could you just describe for the board your work routine and how that impacts where you permanently reside?
I, I can do both. I work remotely the majority of the time.
Okay.
I go, we have Furniture Market, which I have to attend in April and October.
Now, I'm going to ask this. This board is here to decide whether you are a qualified voter.
Yes.
If the board were to decide you weren't a qualified voter, where would you want to vote?
Right here.
Have you voted anywhere else?
I've never voted anywhere except Brunswick County.
And is that going to remain regardless of what the board's decision is?
That's what I intend to do. Yes, sir.
Now, if they tell you you can't vote, you're not going to vote, but are you going to engage in every step to, to assuage them of any concerns they might have?
Correct. This is where I want to live the rest of my life.
Do you have any concerns about?
I'm sorry.
Where you live?
Do I have any concerns about where I live? No, sir.
You live where?
Other than the fact that we're being watched.
How does it make you feel having to go through this process?
I'm, I'm not very happy about it. Actually, it's quite nerving. It's quite nerving. I don't understand why somebody would want to be that way.
That's all.
As much as I've done nothing but try to do the right thing for the town of Holden Beach, and I've been in. As much as done nothing but try to do the right thing for the town of Holden Beach, and I've been in complete support of him until this, and now I have asked him to step down and not do what he loves to do, and that breaks my heart.
So for the health of your family?
Yes.
But so when he steps down, do y'all still intend to remain in Holden Beach?
And I know exactly who I'm going to vote for.
Those are all the questions I have with Ms. Smith.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Smith?
I don't know.
Do you want to? Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
So there is a mention in here that you said in some public meeting that your final resting place was going to be someplace in Supply. Do you know?
No, sir.
Do you remember saying that?
That that comment was taken out of context. I was referring to the two properties that we own off of the island and that eventually, because of all the steps at our eight twenty-three residence, we will eventually turn eight twenty-three probably over to our children and we will reside on a one-story, one-level flat land in my elderly eight years.
But that's going to be a while.
That will be a while, and that my statement was that we would still be a part of the community.
Thanks for that update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
In light of that comment, Mr. Chair, I do have one comment to make.
I'm sorry?
I would have one follow-up question if that's okay. There's allegations, you made a Facebook post or a Facebook comment that you don't live in Holden Beach and y'all live in High Point. Can you address?
Never said that. That is incorrect.
That is all the questions I have.
All right, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, thank you very much. Mr. Worley, thank you. At this time, that's all. You can have a seat. Oh, I'm sorry.
Chairman, you have required, oh, sorry. You have inquired to them if they believe they are registered to vote and they have insisted that they are qualified to vote, therefore they need to take an additional oath.
Okay.
If you could place your left hand on the Bible or raise your right. Do you solemnly swear that you are a citizen of the United States, that you're at least eighteen years of age or will become eighteen by the date of the next general election, that you have or will have resided in the state and in the precinct for which you are registered for thirty days by the date of the next primary or election, that you are not disqualified from voting by the Constitution or the laws of this state, that your name is Richard Smith and Lori Smith, and that in such name you were duly registered to vote as a voter of the Secession Two precinct, and that you are the person you represent yourself to be, so help you God.
Yes.
We do.
Okay, thank you. Now you can continue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, the Chair would like to provide Mr. Felmy an opportunity to say anything else additional. Mr. Button, do we have to swear him in?
I do.
And if I may, you did email some information to me and I just want to make sure the board knows where that is. So in your binder, there's a orange salmon-looking tab and it says new challenger submission, so that is information that I received from Mr. Felmy ahead of this proceeding.
Okay.
Have we received a copy of that, Ms. Excuse me?
Oh, that's a great question. No, I don't believe you have. I'll bring mine to you. Oh, one, oh, the one and two.
Mr. Felmy, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, members. I really don't know where to begin. But let me start with my right here.
Mr. Felmy, could you speak up a little bit, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
I also want to make comment about a pretty good tan that I have. Well, I also live at Holden Beach, one thirty-seven Carolina Avenue. I spent most of my summer in the hospital at Chapel Hill because of the sicknesses I have. So if I slow down and stop for a second, it's because I have an autoimmune disease which affects my lungs and I run out of oxygen, so.
Understood.
Okay. Let's talk about this post office box, which we spend an inordinate amount of time on. At rental properties, if you want your renters to get any kind of mail or receive FedEx products, FedEx deliveries or UPS deliveries, you must have a mailbox at that rental house. Okay? I have two renters that live right next door to me and they put their boxes in this summer because their renters couldn't get any Amazon or Alibaba products delivered to them because they didn't have mailboxes. So their residents who rent complained about that. I've never been offered a slot at the Supply Post Office. I lived here from two thousand and twelve to around, or owned from two thousand and twelve around two thousand and fifteen and I could never get my mail sent to where I lived up in Newport, Rhode Island and they wouldn't save it for me either. I'd like to ask the Smiths, when their magazines started being sent to their mailbox at eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West. I know that their sewage and water address was changed in November of two thousand and twenty-four from High Point to the eight twenty-three address. But from two thousand and seven on forward, it was the High Point address. Mr. Smith had addressed the fact that he had made calls into the board meetings from Aruba and Jamaica. I've not been afforded any of those bills from the cell phone or the hotel room or anything to prove that those phone calls were made from Aruba, Jamaica, or wherever. I never meant to stalk Mr. Smith, but it was an easy thing to find out whether he lived or not because my dog, prior to dying in December of two thousand and twenty-four, used to love to go for a ride every night.
Sorry, can you say that again?
My dog,
Okay.
before he died of cancer, used to love to go for a ride after dinner every night. And it just happened to have been a convenience heading, they had east, west, and then back east.
You're on a point of privilege. For purposes of the record, if he's going to talk about potential criminal acts, he probably needs his right redstone.
It's, no, this is my nickel, okay? It's just the fact of the matter. Okay, okay. I have a piece of information. I don't know whether I sent this to you, Ms. Lever, which is a Guilford County real property data, which shows that the address at twenty-four oh eight High Point is not a barn. That is a residential area of one point five two acres with a total living area of eighteen hundred and twelve square feet and a appraised value of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the building. Would you like to see a copy of this, Mr. Felmy?
I'm sorry, is that in our binder or is it?
No, I haven't seen that before.
Okay. Can you give that to Mrs. Lever, please?
That also that also supports an enclosure nine A of the package that I gave you originally dated seventh July, two thousand and twenty-five that states that it's a residence and it's the residence of Mr. Smith and Lori Smith, twenty-four oh eight Midview Drive, High Point, North Carolina.
Mr. Felmy, if I could just help the board find your original packet in their binder, if you'll just give me just a moment. So in your binders, you have a yellow sticky tab that says challenger submissions, Felmy, in parentheses. That whole section is the original packet you received for the preliminary hearing, so it would be in there, what he's referring to.
And that's probably a good point I didn't ask is, has everybody read my package?
Yes, sir. I have.
Yes. It, it, it needs to be read because some of the questioning of Mr. Smith was a little off kilter, okay? And the answers were a little off kilter, but we'll go into that in a minute. Enclosure nine A of my original submission is supported by that document I just gave Ms. Lever in that it's a residence. It's a two-bedroom, three-bath, eighteen hundred and twelve square foot, single-family home which last sold for a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Pretty nice barn. Okay, what started this and the reason I took this on is listed in my basic letter because there was quite a bit of anxiety the night that Mr. Smith was sworn in as a commissioner in Holden Beach. When I was sitting in the crowd, when he, in the commissioner's meeting, there were several gasps which took place from people who said, this man is not a resident of Holden Beach. What is going on? And it continued meeting after meeting after meeting. I finally got fed up. I found out nobody in Holden Beach had the courage to take this issue on. And so I did. Okay? Now, do we need to go through this letter one by one? Enclosure by enclosure, or do you feel that you? Because what I'm concerned about is when we address the issue of Sand Pebbles LLC, we do not address the fact that in accordance with its filing with the state of North Carolina, it's a rental business. Okay? And when Mr. Smith's lawyer addressed that issue with him, not the rental issue, but addressing the issue of Sand Pebbles LLC, Mr. Smith's immediate reaction was, yeah, I've got the kids there during Christmas. That was exactly what he said. It's on the recording. We can play it back if we need to. Because this record is supposed to be either a court stenographer or the meeting's supposed to be recorded. Would anybody like to hear that again?
Continue.
None of the questions are ever answered in full. Okay. I'd like to ask Mr. Smith when his license was changed. Eight twenty-three Holden Beach. I'd like to ask Mr. Smith how he got to work every morning, or most mornings, I understood he traveled a lot. I was in the Navy for thirty years. I traveled a lot. But I always came home to a permanent abode. And where I used to live, they had the same voting residence requirements. And this is from the North Carolina statute. When registering to vote, a voter must use their fixed habitation as their voting residence, the place where whenever that person is absent, that person has the intention of returning. That's a quote. A voter who relocates temporarily with the intention of returning to their home will maintain their home residence. But if a voter relocates to a new place and intends the move to be permanent, that voter loses their residency to the previous address. Would you like me to read it again? You look.
Yeah. Continue.
Okay. Merely owning property or paying taxes somewhere does not establish residency for voting purposes. What matters is where a person's fixed habitation is. It seems like I got my fingers caught in the cookie jar and so I'm going to come up with some kind of a good intellectual excuse as to why I've lived there since two thousand and seven. Whether Mr. Smith votes in two thousand and twenty-five, that's another issue. The fact of the matter is, since he's been a commissioner, he has not been in a permanent abode at eight twenty-three High Point, Holden Beach, North Carolina.
Just for the board's clarification, the voter challenge is only as to his qualification to be a voter.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The voter, the challenge we are undergoing is only as to his right to vote at this time. This will have no effect on anything prior to now.
Okay, so it's going forward.
Correct.
Remedy, okay.
What was failed to have been brought about is enclosure number ten of my package.
We'll see in a moment, sir.
An email from Mr. Scott Jaber.
Okay.
In paragraph two, he lists, Commissioner Smith lists his address as a state board of election as eight twenty-three Ocean Boulevard West, Holden Beach. As a resident of eight eleven Ocean Boulevard West since August of two thousand and twenty, I have observed that he does not appear to reside at his address. In our conversations since spring of two thousand and twenty-one, Rick mentioned that he co-owns a beach house with his brother and rents it out during the summer to cover taxes. He also stated that he lives in High Point, North Carolina, where he worked for a school bus company until his retirement. Over the past few years, Rick's presence at Holden Beach has been limited to brief periods in the spring, occasional weekends in the fall. Notably, since his election as commissioner, he visits have become less frequent as he often attends meetings from High Point. I don't believe that was read out of Mr. Felmy's last package. There are also several other letters in here. There are also several other letters in here. Which address his issues. Now in my package under enclosure number fourteen. Ms. Smith just testified that testified under oath that her conversation during a January twenty eighth Holden Beach Commission Facebook meeting was taken out of context. But if you look at page where it starts, the second page in, where it starts is says note Lori Smith admission. Says back to Carlton Pittman, Carlton Pittman is a man who was on this conversation with Ms. Smith. Where they were discussing the issue of Smith being a resident of Holden Beach. And it says, you make a legitimate point, and that's your opinion. But to set the record straight, this is this is Ms. Smith, to set the record straight. Rick Smith, Rick does spend most of his time on the island. We also own two properties off of the island. One of which will be a full-time home once I retire. We also own two properties off the island. One of which will be our full-time home once I retire. She did not say that eight twenty three Holden Beach Ocean Boulevard West was going to be her full-time home, nor that it is. We will still be in the community. We have both been voters in Brunswick County for thirty plus years. This we want to, this is where we want to spend the rest of our lives. I'm assuming that's grammatically in Brunswick County. Rick was there for special, for the special meeting that was canceled due to the snow. When they rescheduled, he advised that he would not be able to return to to the meeting. It just goes on to the next page. But nothing has been taken out of context. The woman admitted. The woman admitted, and that's how she got the voter challenge put against her. That they didn't live at eight twenty three Ocean Boulevard West. And that when she retired they were gonna live at a house other than eight twenty three out in Supply, North Carolina, not in the town of Holden Beach. I don't, I don't understand what was taken out of context. We go on to the next page. It would be about the third or fourth page in. Because it's very, it's very difficult to cut and paste out of Facebook, at least on my computer. He stays for a week during off season. This is Rick, he stays for the week. You go in about four pages in. It has a check mark on the right hand side of Mrs.
Does it have a name associated with the comment?
Okay, if you go in. Okay, start at the very beginning, the very first page of the conversation for the Facebook conversation, you go into one, two. Three. Four. It says from Ms. Smith. The fifth page in. It's date time stamped at fifty one fifty nine, fifty one minutes and fifty nine seconds in the lower left hand corner. Says he stays for a week during the off season. But during the summer, he rents out his house. Given this, I truly understand, I can truly understand what is best for Holden Beach, especially during the prime season when the town faces most of its significant challenges and opportunities. Decisions that affect our community year round should be made by those who experience it firsthand. Okay. That's Mr. Pittman. We need to belabor any more of this. Lori Smith then continues on the, on the next two pages in. Fifty one fifty nine. It says Lori Smith, Rick Smith certainly does not spend the majority of his, excuse me, that's Carlton Pittman. To Lori Smith, Rick Smith certainly does not spend the majority of his time on the island. I ride by his house, another stalker. I ride by his house almost every day. And for the most part, no one is there. I have no issues with Rick personally, nor does Mike Felmly have any issues. We have spoken in our good terms. However, as I noted, it is not the best for anyone, much less the town to have a commission who does not live there full time. That's his personal opinion. I, excuse me, I asked Ms. Liver. If you were able to subpoena any of his tax records. Because I'm not able to do that.
The board has that.
Okay, I am not privy to what his tax records say, so I'll leave that up to you. But I'd also like to ask the board just to consider the following. The record for his voting goes back to two thousand and seven. His place of employment and his place of, and his wife's place of employment is in High Point. Did he drive to High Point every day when he had to go to work? That's almost a four hour trip each way. This voting record that I have goes back to two thousand and seven. Now, there's one or two times in there, I think if you look that they voted by absentee ballot. But that's a, he might need fifteen cars to do that. Okay, but this thing, this whole testimony is filled with loopholes. And innuendo and I just don't buy it. The fact of the matter is and it's proven in my time and my thesis was that he doesn't live at eight twenty three Holden Beach Boulevard. Stands based on the information that I provided you. The only time and this may be an issue too. The only time that Mr. Smith ever used eight twenty three Ocean Boulevard West as a mailing address during this entire packet and any document that I can find. Was when he registered for election in my enclosure six. It's the county forum dated November twenty nineteen, it might be a state forum. Statement of organization. The only document that I could find after doing a years and a half research. Where Mr. Rick Smith stated his mailing address was eight twenty three was when he registered to vote in the last election. And it was received, it said, they say it was received on zero two twenty twenty one. On the, on the registration. Okay, two more things. Finally. I think I sent this. Ms. Liver, this is the address. I sent you a piece of, an additional piece of paperwork. Because I couldn't find the picture that I had. Because my phone, my iPhone fourteen or whatever it was was stolen when I was at Food Lion, of all places. And had the picture of the rental sign in front of Rick Smith's eight twenty three Holden Beach address. When I went back to take another picture when I got my new phone. It was gone and there was a man painting the trim on the front porch. But I did run this, which you were given, a document. It states, this property is no longer in our inventory. What I did is I went back and I Googled Holden Beach Vacations Brunswick, Brunswick Land Realty. And this is what popped up. It's no longer in our inventory. If you'd like to look for something else, please feel free to do so. Any questions? I miss anything? Again, I'm, you know. I don't know what else it takes, but these are direct answers to the issue. No questions, sir?
No. Okay, I just want to make sure you were done.
No, I, I just.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Felmly?
Sir. So your claim is that Ms. Smith says that she's going to retire in, in some point in the future
Yes.
to some house other than eight twenty three.
Say that again.
She's going to, that she's going to retire to some house other than eight twenty three. Right?
Eight twenty three. Sometime in the future, she's gonna retire.
Okay, but for now, she lives where she lives, right? She lives at eight twenty three.
No. No.
Okay.
Let's read this again. She says to Mr. Pittman, after Mr. Pittman stated that he does not live at eight twenty three, okay? She says to Carlton, you make a legitimate point. Rick does spend most of his time on the island. We also own two properties off island. One of which will be our full-time home once I retire. We still will be in the community. We will be voters in Brunswick for over thirty years. There were, there, this is where we intend to spend the rest of our lives. It does not say that she was. If you go to, find this enclosure. You go to enclosure nine. You see to their current address, her property details is twenty four oh eight Midview Drive, High Point, North Carolina. She also owned, they own those other pieces of property. It also states at enclosure nine A that she currently resides at twenty four oh eight Midview Drive.
If you did a search on my record, you would find that I have a wife named Kathy Smutsky.
No, I'm not saying.
But she divorced me in nineteen eighty six. And yes, it's carried ever since. I just got some mail from her. I'm just saying, sometimes these reports have false information.
Okay. The reason there are so many in here is to corroborate that evidence, okay? It's not onesies and twosies. It isn't. It's throughout the entire thing. I have never seen, until this morning, and I've lived in Holden Beach since two thousand and twelve. Never laid my eyes on Ms. Lori Smith. Never wanted to get her involved in this until she addressed herself in the Facebook page and admitted she didn't live there. No question.
The Lewis?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, you have any questions?
Briefly. If you might hang around, Mr. Felmly. Mr. Felmly, sir. I want to thank you for the opportunity to
Just go ahead.
I want to thank you for the opportunity, allow me to question. At any point in time, because of your health concerns, you need to sit down, let me know. Okay. You have no ability to state what is the desire or subjective belief of Mr. and Mrs. Smith and where they want to reside.
Can't answer it.
Can't answer?
No, I said I can't answer it. I didn't, you asked me a yes or no question.
Because
You asked me a yes or no question, and I said.
Because where a person intends to reside, they are the ones that possess that information, correct?
No, I'm not gonna get into a I'm not gonna get into that kind of conversation.
Are you refusing to answer the question, Mr. Felmly?
I didn't say I'm gonna refuse. I said I'm not gonna get into that discussion.
So objection is to non-response.
He said, she said, I'm not gonna get into a speculation or what I think. I just presented the evidence, it's all I know.
And so you're unaware that he had cancer and had to attend certain doctors' visits.
I can't hear you.
You were unaware that he had cancer in twenty twenty five and had to attend.
You were aware that I have Charcot Marie Tooth?
I'm not, I'm not challenging.
That I have Wegener's? You aware I got this nice tan in front of the hospital? Come on.
Mr. Felmly, could you address that into the microphone, please? I have a hard time hearing you.
Whether he had cancer or not is irrelevant. But the fact, we're talking about a specific date and time when he voted and was not a resident of the island.
Objection is to non-responsive. I believe my time and opportunity is to ask questions for you to answer, Mr. Felmly. I do not mean to be disrespectful, but I would.
Mr. Worley, can you speak up, please? I'm sorry.
I'm not trying to be disrespectful, Chair. I'm trying to ask questions and I'd ask that he would answer them.
Understood. Could you re, readdress the question, please?
You were unaware that he had cancer.
Why would I know it? It's a HIPAA issue. That's not a public issue, that's a HIPAA issue.
When you assert that he was not attending meetings and he was explaining to the reasons why, it is relevant and provides context. Would you agree, Mr. Felmly?
No. I, that's a HIPAA issue. If he told Ms. the clerk that he had that, and the clerk went out and spread it to the board, that's the clerk's issue, not mine.
But
I'm not gonna talk about his issue.
Correct, but now that you are here unaware of that, doesn't it give you comfort to know?
No, it doesn't, not, not with this issue, no.
It doesn't give you comfort to know?
No, not that, not that he doesn't live at eight twenty three Ocean Boulevard West.
Well, you, you put in your documentation in support of why he's not a resident about his failure to attend meetings. Do you recall that? Putting that in your?
Certainly do, and what I, the reference here is you'll remember Mr. Scott Jobber. Okay, his statement, what was it, number nine or? Shall I go back to it?
Mr. Jobber, is he here today? Is Mr. Jobber here today?
He had, he is not. I don't know where he is. I didn't ask him to come.
Now you put in your report.
Wait a minute. Let me, let me just find Mr. Jobber's statement so we can get it back to answer your question. Over the past few years, Rick's presence at Holden Beach has been limited to, and this is a quote, brief periods, because you didn't make reference to this, nor to Ms. Lori's. Periods in the spring and occasional weekends in the fall. Notably, since his election as a commissioner, his visits have become less frequent. He often attends the meetings remotely from High Point. I hope that puts in context where I got my information from to put it in my basic letter.
You utilized the term innuendo. So, listen to this question, Mr. Finley. Do you believe that best evidence is a record of his attendance from the actual Holden Beach municipality?
I don't know what best evidence is.
Do you believe it's Mr. Jobber's opinion of his attendance? Please listen to my question, Mr. Finley.
Can we have one at a time, please? Mr. Worley?
Thank you. Do you believe that Mr. Jobber's opinion is a better reflection of his attendance record than the municipality's attendance record of Mr. Smith?
Would you like me to get someone up here who can speak to his attendance record as more of an expert than me?
You've made the assertion, Mr. Finley, I'm cross-examining you about the, about your knowledge of it. So, at this point, I'm asking you, do you believe Mr. Jobber's?
It's not an opinion. It's a statement.
So you believe that his statement of Mr. Jobber about his attendance record is better evidence than the actual attendance record?
I haven't seen the attendance record. I don't know how accurate the attendance record is.
I believe we had sworn testimony from the records from the Holden Beach Commission relative to attendance, which was part of Mr. Smith's package. I think we've seen enough on that to.
Yes, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
I can't verify.
It was part of Mr. Smith's submission, which indicated over the last number of years, which meetings he was in attendance and was not in attendance.
My, my expert.
I think, I think we've settled that question. Can we continue?
Okay, if you're, whatever, you're happy.
I, I'm sorry, say that again.
You're the boss.
You know, I, we've, we've seen documentation that purported to be from the clerk of the commission in Holden Beach relative to the attendance since 20, going back whatever it was, 2022, so.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Mr. Worley?
Mr. Chair, I believe that the board has heard a lot of evidence, and I do not want to waste y'all's time.
Mr. Worley, you're gonna.
I don't want to waste y'all's time. I think y'all have heard a lot of evidence today. I'll rest with that.
All right. Mr. Finley, thank you very much. At this point, do we have any discussion or questions from the board? Mr. Lewis? Okay.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chair. I do have Mr. Smith's neighbors here, if they could stand up, direct neighbors. I believe we have a doctor and his wonderful wife. I don't intend to call them, but I do believe that they would attest by raising of their hand that they see Mr. Smith almost every day and they have for the past years. Do I understand that correctly?
They haven't been sworn.
There's those.
They haven't been sworn.
No, 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 can't speak.
Would you like her sworn in for that testimony, Mr. Worley?
I would love, I would love to have her sworn in light of that.
Ma'am, could you come up to the podium, please? That's okay. Feel, feel free to hang on.
Yeah.
Mr. Batten, if you could.
I do.
Could you state your name, ma'am?
Sally Caldwell.
Where do you reside, Ms. Caldwell?
We, right now, we at 121 South Shore Drive, Holden Beach.
Okay, and do you have occasion to see the comings and goings of Mr. and Mrs. Smith?
Yes, because we live next door to them since we had a house at 825 Ocean Boulevard West since 1978. And I've seen them, all of the Smiths, which there are many, many Smiths coming and going.
But right now, we're only challenging two tanned Smiths of whether they live in Holden Beach.
Right.
In this year, how often would you see them on a weekly basis from January to today's date?
Well, at least once a week, because when, and, and when they came down, you know, for maintenance and all that, then we would get together and have dinner and all that, so.
You would see them pretty regularly? You would see them pretty regularly?
Yes, yes.
That's all the questions I have.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Worley, is anything else?
Your Honor, I don't want to belabor the point. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Mr. Worley, you have, I apologize once again. I'm having a very difficult time hearing.
That's all I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Smutsky, you were going to make a motion?
I make motion that we find that the that Mr. and Mrs. Smith are properly registered.
Do we have any discussion, Ms. Clarity? Mr. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Smutsky? Mr. Meyer? Okay.
You, friendly modification that the challenge is overruled. Is your motion that the challenge is overruled because he is a resident?
I, I was trying to read from, from your guidance, but yes, if, if we find that the voter is properly registered, then the challenge will be overruled.
Okay, yeah.
That's, that's what we're understanding, based on your guidance.
Okay. All right. Like to thank everybody for their participation this morning. I know it's been a long morning. Having said that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. I believe we are concluded. Mr. Batten, is there anything else we need to cover?
If your meeting's over, you would need a motion to adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I make motion that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.